All right, it's 7:00 PM, August 21st, 2019. We're at a Board of Education regular meeting here at Cog Highs on the opening ceremony. Can we please have roll call?
Mrs. Etter.
Here.
Mr. Naaman.
Here.
Mr. Souchacki.
Here.
Mr. Dobbins.
Here.
Mrs. Schuker. Here. Five present, zero absent. On behalf of the Board, I would like to welcome students, staff, parents, and interested community members to tonight's Board of Education meeting, and our guests, speakers. The Board values and encourages public comment on education issues. Anyone having an interest in actions of the Board may participate during the public comments portion of the meeting. Please identify yourself on the Board's side, please. A copy of the Board meeting agenda is available for review on our school districts' website. Please silence your cell phones during meetings. At this time, can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I please have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So.
Moved by Mr. Souchacki.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Naaman. Any discussion?
Just, my apologies, we were, with the meetings being so close, we really were putting stuff in as late as Monday afternoon to, with the two weeks in between, it was a little frenetic, so I apologize for not getting some stuff out to you sooner, so thank you for your patience with me on this, on this agenda here.
Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none, roll call.
Mr. Souchacki.
Hi.
Mr. Naaman.
Hi.
Mrs. Etter.
Hi.
Mr. Dobbins.
Hi.
Mrs. Schuker.
Motion passes five to zero. Comments from the public? Hearing none, moving on to the GPD update. Do you want to introduce?
Sure, we've got with us, and they'll be familiar face or faces to us, and more familiar as time goes on, but Jason Nolte and Mark Salapek from GPD, we met Monday, and wanted to bring them before the Board here to give you a little update as to just where we're at with them, and Mark and, or at least Jason's going to be a regular attendee at Board meetings, we're going to try and update you as frequently as possible, and Mark's been kind enough to come down, and, because we're kind of at a point where we're moving forward to some things, and just wanted to be able, you, the Board, to be able to interact with Mark and Jason as well about how we're, how we're putting a plan together. So, at that, I'll turn it over to you guys.
Can I take this off?
Yeah, absolutely. You can sing karaoke too if you want to, Mark.
I don't even think you'd believe me. Believe me. I don't have the good voices. Is this, is this working?
It can, yeah.
Maybe.
Well, it sounded like it's recording.
It seems to be.
It does?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, thanks for having us back tonight. We've done a lot of work, and as Mr. Evans has noted, we'll come back as much to update you on what's going on, because, well, first, I want to thank you for selecting GPD to help, help you with your process. So, we've been through this, I think we can be a good aid for you, and, but this is a working process, and it's not a quick thing usually, but we're trying to move pretty quick. So, we have a lot of information to share with you tonight, but what we'll put on it right now, and we've shared with Mr. Evans and Mr. Mucchio, is, right now, we're calling it draft. So, we'll share with you what we've done, we came out here pretty quick, we brought a lot of people out, Jason will talk about that, but we will come back to any Board meeting that you want to share more information with you. But quite honestly, as we talked to these two gentlemen about it, eventually, some decisions are going to need to be made. I mean, we'll help you with that, we'll share with you a bunch of things that we've done with other districts, but I think, I think you have a lot of potential here, which I really like, and we'll help you out with whatever you need, so. I'll turn it over to Jason. We'd like to have this more as like a work session instead of us presenting to you, so if you have questions as we go through it, please ask us, please, and we'll share with you insights of what we've done in the past, insights of what we see here, but we brought a good team out here, and they've gone through your facilities, so we have a lot of work done today.
All right, so, we've put together this quick presentation, but as Mark indicated, it's really intended to facilitate a conversation and just share with you kind of where we're at. So, we're gonna, I mean, the quick agenda here, we're gonna kind of update you where we are overall on the schedule and kind of what we have left going forward, go through how we did the needs assessment, which we've completed, and we're wrapping up the documentation with, and then started to create what is a priority list, you know, from at least our position, having gone through the buildings, but then, you know, that'll be something that is really a tool intended for the administration and the Board to use to help facilitate the decisions that Mark was alluding to. And then starting to, the idea then would be that we would also weave in, you know, the community wants that go along with it, that, you know, we've, you've had a six, good session, and we're gonna be, you'll see here, be meeting with the best committee as well to get their input, to start to have a comprehensive master plan of both the needs and the wants. So, you know, anytime that the Board's meeting, I think it might be good for us to come back and just sort of share with you where we're at overall, so we took advantage of this opportunity. We're, from a schedule here, we're going to be meeting with the best committee on the 29th, which is next Thursday. I will let you know that we're not going to be sharing this information that we have here today necessarily with them, but it's intended to go over the, the schedule, the overall schedule, and identify some of the stuff that we have, and then hear, you know, I guess document some of the wants pieces of it. And then we have another meeting scheduled on the September 10th with the administration to kind of go through what we think will be a final draft, and where we, I guess, dig into more about the, with the priority list, to get at least their input, and then try to meet with you at the September Board meeting again for another update. And then after that, you know, weaving in, we'll have a final report, what we've put here for October, the 1st of October, where we've got the comprehensive master plan of both the needs and the wants. We just wanted to share with you, as Mark indicated, we did have a big team of people that came out and did the assessments of all the buildings, so you can see here, we had, with myself, we had another architect, we had a, it's kind of funny, I was doing the colors there. Had another architect, civil engineer, mechanical engineer, electrical engineer, and structural engineer, you know, they all looked at their piece of the puzzle that goes, that makes up the buildings, and noted what they saw, and then developed the report.
Yeah, we were out here for two days.
It was like two full days plus, and coming back, and, you know, once some other spaces were accessible and whatnot, so, overall, it was maybe, you know, close to a week. I think we shared this with you last time, so the way we developed the assessment was to follow the OFCC guidelines that they have put together, that's kind of the industry standard to use, and, you know, it's broken down into all these various disciplines that we have. So, what, as Mr. Evans indicated, we've created an individual report for each building, and one for the, sort of the maintenance buildings and bus storage, plus then the site, since it's just like, it's a large campus and tied to individual buildings. And then we used each one of those categories to, you know, to put together the report. So, what we thought would be helpful is to share with you then what the report is going to look like, and give you a, like a glimpse of some of the things, and you start to see what it is that we're starting to find out here. So, I mean, I think you can expect, the buildings are a little bit older, you know, they are older, and they have some older equipment that goes along with it, they have some accessibility issues, so I wanted to touch on those two particular items, just as part of this. So, what we pulled out here was the heating system for the elementary building, plus, you know, tie along with that is the HVAC, the cooling, plus also then the accessibility piece. So, what we generally did is we put together our findings in a paragraph like this, you know, indicating, just documenting what it is that we see, what it is that is there now, putting some, you know, we just put two here, but we put a handful of pictures with each one of these two, just to show, as a general example, as to what, what is there. And then you can see, we did the same thing with the HVAC and the cooling, that, you know, it is, we do have at least some partial cooling there in the elementary building, so documenting some of that. And then that leads to what our recommendations are, and again, this is just for HVAC items related to elementary. So, we indicated there that the current system doesn't meet the current mechanical, Ohio Mechanical Code, or the, the school design manual, so if it doesn't comply, then we make a note of that, and we put it on our list to document, and we can get some additional photos there. What we do then is, we also then put together a graph that, as you see there on the top there, that will price out what a replacement for that particular system would be, so then we have, you know, pricing associated with each one of the tasks that we can use for budgeting purposes.
Can I ask you a question?
Yep.
Like, for the quantity, would that be square footage?
Yep.
Okay.
Not always.
Okay.
Sometimes, sometimes it's by linear foot, just depends on what item it is that we're looking at, you know, sometimes it's by just quantity each, you know, like, it's a, for example, if it's a water closet replacement, because it doesn't meet ADA standards, that would be like a one quantity, obviously, so, they're not always by square footage.
I have a quick question.
Go ahead, Joe, please.
After you. So, I just had a question, you said that there's going to be individualized reports by building. Are the recommendations, like, structured that way too? Are they by building, or basically are they overall recommendations to the, to the overall district then?
No, they're by build, by building, by discipline.
Okay, great, thank you.
So, just using your HVAC presentations as, as a, as a reference point, when you make note that a particular piece of equipment is obsolete, or doesn't meet the current mechanical code, or what have you, how do I, how do I take that? Do I take that as, if we were building a new building today, this wouldn't be allowed, or that retrofitting an existing building, this needs to be replaced? And, and I guess the last, I'm sorry to be so detailed about it, but the last question I have then is, is that once you kind of get past that, if an existing piece of equipment is still allowable, so to speak, can you have a conversation about what its likely extended life would be relative to a brand-new piece of equipment, and what its likely life would be?
Yeah, all right, that is a lot of.
Yes, you asked for it.
To start with, no, we're not just like, obviously, if we did, if we just assume, does it meet all current code and everything like that, every assessment we did would almost be like a complete replacement every time. So, it's, we don't look at it from that standpoint necessarily, it's, again, it's reviewing it against the design manual guidelines, but in reality, you'll see in that report as well, is we are looking for, is the equipment near the end of its useful life? So, you know, from an HVAC standpoint, it's generally somewhere between 20, 25, 30 years, depending on what the type of equipment is. And so, when you're getting near the end of that, it's, it becomes more difficult to find replacement parts, it's obviously, you're, you know, there's a point where, you know, you can, obviously, this is, that's where the discussion part happens, you have the ability to just maintain and continue with it, but, you know, from our professional opinion, it's at the point where then a replacement is required, and is, you know, recommended. So, there's going to be some conversations with that. And then, what was the last part of the question?
Well, it kind of goes to the idea that if one decides to retain an existing piece of equipment, if you can project out what its life is, and then compare that on a side-by-side basis to what the new equipment is and what its lifespan is, you know, I'm kind of thinking that things in a general, sometimes are built not to the same standards as what's already there, and that the life on something brand-new may only be the same as an existing piece of equipment that's well-maintained.
Well.
And that's just a, you know, an assumption on my part, I may be completely dead wrong on it.
Yeah, I don't really get a, you know, thoughts on that. You know, we do a lot of mechanical equipment, it's a major issue now.
I'll be very honest with you. You know, if you go down to your mechanical equipment room, you're going to see a big boiler there, it probably takes up about, you know, eight by 10 space. Now, you take the boiler in there, and it takes up a space of like four by four. It's more efficient.
Okay.
It helps you in operations, your, your utility costs are less, it's the same thing with like light fixtures, you know, LED now, they're the same cost as a fluorescent fixture, you're not replacing light bulbs for 20 years. I mean, it's an economy of scale kind of thing.
Okay.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, no, that's, that's fine, I just had to ask the question to understand comparatively, do you make that threshold decision about going down new versus fixing the old, and you've answered my, my.
Yeah, like, I mean, Jason mentioned, now, when you have the older stuff, it's hard to get parts, nobody's making those parts, they're just saying, we're not going to supply you anymore, if you want to find it online in eBay or something like that, go right ahead, but we're not making those parts to replace that equipment. And I, we've, I don't know if I talked to you about this for now, Mark, we, we've actually had that conversation with the Board before, with our steam boilers, that Neil's kind of scavenged traps from all over Northeast Ohio, and has a cabinet of traps down there because that, they're not made anymore, and, and nobody sells them anymore, so as, as places get torn down, and Neil kind of has kept an eye for them, he's got a cabinet down there where he's, he's purchased traps, because that's one of the things that go with the, with the steam system, so we have them to move forward with, so that, that's exactly the point we're, we're talking about, it's, it's an obsolete, while it's functional now, at some point in time, we're not going to be able to get traps for those, that steam system anymore.
Okay.
And, and our, our maintenance staff's done an outstanding job of finding parts, keeping those boilers running, and, and do, you know, heat has not been an issue for us, because they've worked so hard on it.
And unfortunately, most of the new, the older buildings, you don't have any redundancy, so if your boiler goes down, you don't have anything to back you on, so.
Good, good points, next.
I have one other question too, so like, when you're creating a priority list, then, so like, what are the factors that, that have you risk ground for priority order? So, it's like, it's like, just like, to build on what Mark was saying, is it like a combination of like the useful life, like code violations, cost, like, you know, availability of parts or maintenance, is, is there like a series of factors and risks that you actually, you know, that you utilize to prioritize like our, our needs?
I guess, wait a little bit, towards the end of the presentation, and I can maybe walk, answer it a little bit better, but, I mean, from our standpoint, what we're looking for is primarily life safety type aspects, security aspects. You know, you know, if a piece of a heating equipment goes out, or even maybe better, like cooling, you know, you can still survive with some of that stuff, but if there's a structural, major structural issue, or, you know, something that is a fire risk, you know, those are security risks, those we put a higher priority to from our initial, but this is, what we're going to share with you is just our first blush at it, and it's intended to be, you know, ultimately, I think the priority list comes from the Board and the administration, you know, you guys can decide that, we're going to give you our, our opinion based on, you know, just, you know, our professional opinion on it, but...
Yeah, and that's, I just wanted to see like how, from your professional opinion, like how do you determine our priority orders, you know, including like, like I just said, those, those sort of factors, and try to engage that.
If there's something that is completely, you know, broken, then obviously that's going to take also a higher priority, but most of this stuff noted in the report is, you know, is what it said, it's being, it's being well-maintained, and most of it's running well, you know, but at the same time, we have to think about, you know, can we keep up with that for a long period of time or not, or at one point, can we, is it, does the tipping point that new equipment makes more sense, you know?
Or, and we've talked about too, at the air, like, in order to put the air, you have to do the other stuff, so it might be like something that's connected with something else.
It is interwoven, and one of the things that, where we're at right now is that they've taken some of the information based on that, the best meeting that they were at, where the, where the needs and the wants were kind of laid out, they've, they've used that as kind of a framework, and also, moving forward, it's going to be sitting down with us as administrative team, and then sitting down with the Board and saying, where, where are we, where do we see this thing going? So, they, you know, they certainly know the equipment, and know, know the lifespan, some of those types of things, but ultimately, the priorities are going to be set by us.
We're just a resource, you know, so.
Right, I understand.
And then, I'm surprised this question hasn't come up yet, where did you get that pricing from, right? I mean, where, you know, what is that? So, that's not a number that we've come up with, I mean, obviously, we, we would have a good educated guess on it as well, but what we're using is what you see down below there in the gray boxes. The OFCC guidelines has established pricing for each one of these different categories, that's all based on their historical data, they have the largest amount of data to compile, and, you know, based on current bidding and everything like that, that they use to develop these, and they issue this, they update this, I should say, once a year, so we're using 2019 data in this, you know, in terms of how we develop the pricing. And then you, you use your multiplying factor for the different regions of the state of Ohio, some are a little bit less, some are a little bit more. But, and then this is also just usually like, kind of middle-of-the-road, you know, so this isn't the high-end equipment, this isn't going to be the lowest, it's sort of the, the middle-of-the-road, you know, what you would generally expect to see with, in this case, you know, HVAC replacement.
I'm sorry, I don't like initials that I don't know what they are, could you just tell me what OFCC stands for?
It's the Ohio Facilities and Construction Commission.
Okay, Ohio Facilities and Construction Commission.
And those figures are based upon, or predicated on the idea that you're retrofitting or renovating an existing building, as opposed to installing a new system in a new building?
Yeah.
Thanks.
There's, there's other costs for, you know, just a new building, right? That you would, that they would have square footage costs associated with either an elementary or middle school or high school, they have different price ranges for different building types, and... So, then, the other aspect that, you know, that we noted as maybe like a continuing theme throughout the different buildings was just accessibility issues, and that is inherent with an older building, you know, we, they were not designed for, you know, a lot of the guidelines that we, we go with today for accessibility, to make sure everybody has access to the different parts of the building. So, you know, from a plumbing standpoint, a lot of the fixtures, you know, they, they don't comply with ADA standards, and then they also don't have a lot of the efficiencies that we have now with automatic sensors and whatnot, so that was something that I wanted to bring up as well, so you can see, again, water coolers or the drinking fountains, similar idea, were, from an efficiency and a accessibility standpoint, do not comply.
It's a water closet.
That's just a...
Like a custodian, oh, it's a toilet?
Yes.
Oh.
We're sorry, that's a technical.
I was thinking it was like a closet for like custodians.
We just call it a janitor's closet. Yeah, I know. But, so same idea here, this is sort of our summary for the elementary building up top, in terms of what we saw, and then down below being, you know, that's the, sort of the guideline pricing that we use as, to develop some of this.
Before you do this, PowerPoint out to, after.
And then similarly, all of the door hardware, or nearly all of the door hardware was not compliant, it's all that knob that doesn't comply with ADA standards, you need to have the lever handle for, you know, for easier aggressibility, so that was something that we noted, there's the rail signage that is a requirement with today, was, you know, is something that's missing. So, again, we indicate, we identify those items, and then we're, you know, since you've got the option now to kind of prioritize what, what makes the most sense to go with.
So, we, sometimes when you touch things, you have to bring it up to standard, so as long as we choose not to replace the doorknobs, we don't have to bring them up to standard, I just threw that one on the table, but I assume all of it is set up that way, as long as we aren't touching that area of that device, it can remain in use, only if we upgrade it, then it has to meet all the standards.
And we have, as we've replaced things, I think the previous, one of the previous sites showed you that, we went from a hot water tank to a, to a gas-fired water heater on the wall, on the right, on the far right here, that was, that replaced a, a water heating tank that went bad on us, and I said to Neil, I said, go with, go with the instantaneous heater, so we, while it's not a lot, we kind of peck and choose, we went pecking and choosing, and we had to replace doors in the high school office, we went with a handle on the door versus, so, as, as those things have come up in front of us, we've tried to make sure that we're doing the right thing.
Doing the right thing, yeah, I'm putting the instantaneous up, I didn't even realize we do that, it's a good idea.
It's miniscule what we, you know, because we're, we're doing more of a maintenance, kind of keep it moving kind of thing, versus any kind of renovation to it.
Yeah, and that is one way to do it, if some things are considered relatively low priority, then you upgrade as, as they fail, rather than just going through for the sake of going through and doing it.
I mean, the doors in the north wing of the building, those are, those are the original doors from the, those classrooms, the nineteen, from the late 1930s, then in our social studies, English wings in the building, those are original doors.
Yeah, those tankless water heaters are a good idea, you know, save you money in the long run.
Right. And, and in some cases, you might do things to get the efficiencies, hot water heater being one of the obvious ones.
Yeah, just energy efficiency.
Right, just like the lighting, I mean, LED essentially pays for itself in a few years.
Yeah, but all those things, Jason and I can help you out with, all you have to do is ask, we'll look at it for you.
Yeah, and spend a lot of time doing R O I's, and, I do keep that in mind whenever we're making an investment.
Wise, wise decision. So then, so then, to kind of go through the priority list, what, what we've started to set up here was taking all of those pieces that we've identified throughout the, the assessments, putting them in a, you know, put a line item towards it, and then fill out an Excel spreadsheet with that information. What this is, is a tool that we want, you know, we want to hand over to, to the Board, to the staff that you can use to help better project, and to use to make some decisions, right? So, you know, we, we put an individual task ID for everything that we found, so, you know, it's kind of categorized by the building, what type of item we found, you know, what discipline it's, it's with, and then an individual number, and then put a description of each one of those items, you know, and then put which building it came, came from, obviously, and then this is, this priority list, again, is, you know, what we, what's initially filled out here is what our recommendation is, but it, you know, it's obviously subject to, to change, you know, in terms of whether it's an immediate need, moderate need, or, you know, long-term.
Second question, can you go through the different types of priorities, low, medium time, and maybe your opinion, if, you know, right now is a good time or not, maybe District Y, what you've seen as a high priority, if, at all?
Yeah, I mean, we touched on it a little bit there initially, so, you know, I can filter this, and this is what the intent of this is here, is that we can filter this list by just what, what is considered high immediate needs, right? So, now, I've got, you know, we can, if we want to go further and filter it by which school, we can do that as well, but, you know, from our standpoint, you know, a lot of these items are, are stuff relating to where water, there is, you know, we've done a good job, I think, keeping the buildings weather-tight, but there are still a couple areas where we've noted some, some water infiltration, but it's just maintaining that too, so, there, you know, from a roofing standpoint, putting, coping over the sand stills where you've got all those joints still there, you know, you just, just preventative maintenance there, but it's correcting a lot of the ADA issues, just, I think, you know, it's, you know, to protect yourself and make the buildings more accessible, I think is, you know, we put that as a high immediate need. The emergency generator backup power, the, the lack of that is something that I think, you know, should be, should be addressed. And then, similarly too, is that the buildings should be fire-suppressed, and they're currently not, so, you know.
What does that mean?
Spring load.
Oh.
So, that they're protected.
So, actually, then, when you're looking at that, I guess this goes to my question, is that, the priority order, so that, I guess, what, Matt, you're, you're talking about is that, the priority of high and immediate, sounds like that we need to do this now, and that's based upon violations of regulation and, and safety or security? Is that, is that what drives that, that high ranking now? Okay.
Again, it's just thinking about your staff and the students, and, you know, what, what's going to give them the best protection, you know, it's, it's more so than comfort, I think, is what we're, we're looking at, so.
Right, yeah, because I realize that, you know, like I said, ultimately, we'll make, we have to make decisions about, you know, because what, what's on that list? decisions about, you know, because what, what's on that list about what to prioritize ourselves with, with your recommendations. But I wanted to understand further of what, you know, high and immediate means, because it sounds like we need to do this yesterday, you know, and is, is that what...
I don't think there's anything in here on the list that is, that we, like, if we found something that was like blaren, I would put a phone call in and you would know about it, you know, it would already, the word would have already traveled down to the board. But these are items that just, we need to maybe put something on the top of the list to maybe high, you know, is not the right term to use, but of the list, this is probably what we would consider the, the highest priority, is, was the intent of it.
I think we take their recommendations along with our thoughts, administration, what the public wants, and we kind of blend it and, you know, and, and there might even, I'm guessing, be some sort of phasing on some of these too, where it's, maybe you do one building or maybe you do portions.
And again, that's why this, I think this tool will be helpful so that you can, we can help start to identify how we want to tackle that, right? So...
The one thing we don't want to do is come here, if, if we saw something in our review that was like life-threatening, like if you don't fix that, that wall's going to fall down, we would tell you like right now, I don't want to come here and tell you that the school started, that this is not safe, because I don't want to be on Channel Five News tomorrow with you, that we came in and told you that the building is unsafe. The building is safe. There's just things that we need to look at, and we'll prioritize the ones that are the highest priority. That we suggest this because otherwise it's going to cause you more damage and it's going to cost you more money.
And that, and that makes sense, because I'm looking at even from an audit perspective. And like, there's a, there's a timeframe for like the moderate, but there's just immediate for highs. That may, that's why I thought that way. And so I, I guess there's probably a timeframe for immediate. It doesn't mean yesterday. It means probably soon.
Maybe I'll, I'll put that on there, like, it means in the next five years.
Yes, that, that makes sense.
Or, or you don't have to do it, but it's probably going to cost you more money down the road if you don't get it.
Which is kind of where we're at. And I think the sprinkler system is the perfect example. When additions were built in the elementary, we have some sprinkler suppression systems in those parts of the building. But we, we know that each year when the insurance company comes back to us, they say, you know, they recommend a sprinkler system throughout the district. Well, we, at this point, putting one in an 81-year-old building separately from a big renovation plan is not, not on, so we just kind of ride that out. And, you know, the value of it, you know, we've got it in spots, but it, it's on that priority list, you know, where, where does that fall, where does it then fall into with what we're doing right now? Now, in a renovation plan, that, I think it's going to move its way up. But, because we've already got it in some parts of the building, especially in the elementary building where there's so many sections built over there, but...
Yeah, well, Jason and I started off, this is a draft.
Yes.
And we're, this is a working plan. We at least have something on paper, because if we don't put something on paper, you have nothing to criticize. Right?
We have nothing to criticize.
But you need to give us your comments, because you're giving our thoughts, but, but we want to hear yours. We want to hear what your priorities are, not just ours.
I will say that, you know, being ADA compliant did come up in at least the small group that I worked with at the public meeting. And it was more, I think we were looking more like outside, like the stadium and things like that. But, I mean, I, I think it definitely is a concern.
And the restrooms down there too, as well, so.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't think to make this stadium ADA compliant would be that much of a cost. I think we could, we've done it in other places. We could figure that out. So we work with a bunch of bleacher manufacturers that have done that kind of thing. It's just us putting a plan together, and I think we could make that work. Depends how important it is.
And that was, it was, because I asked Neil, I said, how long has that concrete been in the, in the stadium? That's the original concrete. So that when they put the stadium in, when they built it, so Neil estimated somewhere in the late 1940s, maybe early 1950s, is when they actually went to the concrete stadium. I heard the stadium was built in the 40s, but he goes that, he goes, that's the original concrete that's underneath there.
Sell it when you dig it up.
So just, just to point out here too, I mean, so, you know, this, with the filtering capabilities, you know, if you want to just know, I'm giving you a report per building, but if you wanted to know HVAC across all of the buildings, you know, you can filter it now this way. So you only can pull out, you know, electrical security or some, you know, aspect and see how it relates across a building. If that, you know, you want to look at, you know, light or the suppression system to, across the campus and, you know, with this filtering tool.
So at some point we will have a copy of that for ourselves so we can do that.
Well, at some point, what, what I would recommend doing is that we're going to sit down with the administrative team and sit down with them and kind of go through it, but then also maybe do a work session in my office where we can put it on the TV. And then we, we can move things around based on what the conversation is. Hopefully with Jason present to, as a group, so.
The, the nice thing about it, it's a tool. Even your maintenance staff can use it. So once you do something, just take that dollar volume out and get that to zero. So it's kind of a tool that you can use for a number of years. It's kind of a master planning thing, right? So if you're 10 years out, well, here's what we need to do.
What do we, what are we including as the fourth building? The stadium?
The, the maintenance buildings.
The maintenance garage, the bus garages.
Oh.
And, and...
So the collection of...
We, we did not do the stadium.
Or the, or the pool. We didn't do the...
And I forwarded the pool study to them. You know, we paid a pretty fair chunk of money for the pool study. I didn't feel we needed to read about the wheel, so I sent that. And I don't know if Jason's actually because we're working on this. I'm sure that, we'll, we'll at some point in time discuss what's in that pool study, but that's, they have that information.
And then, so to this point, we're only focusing on, you know, what we're calling needs. So what, in talking to Mr. Evans, we felt like maybe we would have a report that identifies the needs for each one of the buildings, but then also one that has the wants for each building as well. So, you know, color code those tasks differently or those items differently. But, you know, those need to then be filtered through into this, you know, so you've got one comprehensive document. So that's kind of where we're at right now. We've, we've, you know, compiled all of the, the needs portion of it and, you know, it's still in draft form, but near complete with that. And then with the intent then to, to incorporate the, the wants, which obviously, I don't know if we, if you have anything particular to add to it, but our intention here is to obviously use the communities list that's already been developed.
That's why I gave you, headed out the, that's a copy of the survey that went out. And you've always heard copies from Jim, you know, Jim did a nice job of putting that and breaking all that out and, and totaling that stuff up, so.
Well, quite honestly, the most of the wants are in our study anyway.
Yeah.
So we might have a couple of little gaps here or there, but most of them are in what we're saying anyway.
Questions?
Comments?
Thanks for coming out. Thanks for the, the information. It's a lot, it's a lot to noodle on, but it's a very good first start, so thank you.
One, one thing, and I don't know if this is the appropriate forum, forum for this, but I know that Jim Zazara talked about like doing like another public forum, maybe like in January, February. Is that too far, like...
Wait, good timing on it, because we had, we had a discussion based on the way that we're moving right now with this, that, that, that did come up and, and about the actual timing of that. Because, and we'll talk about some final points. We've also talked about levy. To talk about how this formulates into levy too soon, I, I, people get the misconception that it's, it's going to be a spring levy when we actually, I think we were looking at fall 2020. So we're trying to time it all out and get the information and get people in here at the right time. So, you know, best won't get anything until it's fully gutted by this group here. But also with the community open house and some other things that are going to take place, we want to be able to roll out, here's where we're at, here's where we're looking at dollars and cents wise, and here's where we're going with this. So...
One thing to note is I made, I made Jason put a deadline on it, because sometimes when you don't have a deadline, things just keep dragging on and on and on. And he, Jason put, you know, October 1st as a deadline. But our document is fluid. There, I only put that on there because I, I feel that we have to do that with you. But if October 1st is too quick and we need to do some more work on something else, then I'm perfectly fine with that. But sometimes when you don't give somebody a deadline, it just keeps going on and on and on and on. And I don't want to do that to you. If you have another idea about deadline, we'll work with it.
And I, just from my point of view, I would fully anticipate us going through and doing kind of a priority set to this, and then letting that sit for a little bit and then come back and revisit it. Because sometimes if you, when you sit and work on something for an hour or two hours and you, you get, you get a little bit of tunnel vision on some things until you step away and take a deep breath and come back and take a look at it again, get a little perspective on it. So I would almost want to do that in a couple of stages to say, okay, this is what we talked about last time. Are we still? Or does, you know, is that still, is that still where we want to go? Give ourselves the opportunity to say, maybe, maybe we got all caught up in this conversation over here and this thing jumped to the top and maybe it doesn't belong there or vice versa. So that's just, in any kind of...
Thing's a good idea.
Thing that I, I like, I like kind of always taking a second look at things before you, you move forward with it, just...
Now, now at least you have something on paper that you can look at and say, I don't agree with that.
I think it puts it into perspective too. I know, again, just speaking from my experience with the smaller buy yard, you know, it's, it's easy to throw out wants and needs and have those two blurry, you know, kind of blurred. But when you put, start talking money and how that's going to impact it, it's like, well, maybe we don't need this, you know, maybe that's more of a want.
Leads made to generate to wants.
Well, that's, I said, it was kind of, I said back on that because I could tell who was in some of the groups. But just based on what came out of the groups, you know, Dave Ross is in one group. He's a, he's a safety officer for, for Cleveland Police. I knew safety was going to be one, two, three, and four in Dave's group. No matter what anybody else said, it was, you know, that was, that was the way it was going to come out. And that's okay. And that's, that's something very serious. But then, then how does that work into the whole plan, I think? So.
Good. Good stuff.
Yeah, it is a good start.
I have to say, your spreadsheet was almost as good as Mucciyo's. You have to add colors, more colors.
Oh, yeah. Don't throw gauntlets out.
I'm not Mr. XL.
I might have to sit in between them at the meetings. Thanks, Mark.
Thank you so much for your presentation.
I just want to say too, you know, these guys have been doing a great job. Just want to thank them for all the work that they've already done and looking forward to all the work ahead.
Communications has been fantastic. I mean, just shooting an email, how quick the responses are and, you know, really the pressure's been us to kind of get things to him. And there's, Jason, just your mind, he's still waiting on a couple of reports that we have to get from our maintenance department, you know, so we're not waiting on them. We're, they're, we're holding them up a little bit on some of this stuff, so.
Well, I was talking to my daughter yesterday. It's like, I know this is the age of social media and everything, but when a client calls you, you need to call them back. That's what they want. And that's the way the world goes. I mean, you have a chance to do it. You can see the phone call, right? Call them back. And to me, sometimes an hour is not acceptable. Say, hey, your texts, I'm in a meeting now. I'll call you back in a, whatever. But that's the way we go. And that's the way G P D works. If you want us to do something, we'll do it for you and we'll respond to it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Thanks for your...
Appreciate. Thanks for stopping by.
Thanks for coming. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jason. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we have safe playoffs in mind this year?
Yes, we do. Absolutely do.
Don't like it.
I won't ask again, ever. You guys have a good night.
Thanks again.
All right. Next up is treasurer's business. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the August 7th? Oh, no, I'm sorry. It's here. Sorry. Mr. Mucciyo, go for it.
Thank you, President Shuker. Couple of recommendations tonight. First recommendation, 5A, motion to approve the minutes of August 7th, 2019's regular meeting as found in attachment T1. 6A, motion to accept the bank reconciliation, financial reports, and payments for board review as of July 31st, 2019, as prepared and certified by the treasurer's actuary, as found in attachment T2. 6B, motion to approve a modification to the permanent appropriations for fiscal year 2020, as found in attachment T3. 6C, motion to approve new vendors to the school district per W9's attached, as found in attachment T4. 6D, motion to authorize the superintendent and treasurer to enter into the Title III fiscal year 20, limited English proficient LEP federal funds consortium with the Educational Service Center of Northeast Ohio, as found in attachment T5. Please my recommendations.
Hold on one second. Clicked on the wrong thing. Okay, can I have a motion to approve the treasurer's business consent agenda motions?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Etter?
Second.
Motion seconded by Mr. Dobbins. Any discussion?
Yep.
I'm surprised to hear that.
At 6B, which is going to be our, excuse me, 6A, which is going to be our financial reports. In front of everybody, I printed off the general fund and our budget versus actual long spreadsheets, as well as our five-year forecast, a copy of that that everybody should have. Maria and Lindy will have the five-year forecast on the third page of this.
Thank you for spoiling us. Giving us better treatment.
Because I printed off every spreadsheet for Linda and Maria.
Thank you.
The first page we're looking at, and again, this is the start of fiscal 20. So we've ended fiscal 19. And this is all fiscal 20 of us here from what we're looking at. What I want to do is just show how everything from our fiscal 20 general fund budgets affect the five-year forecast. So how everything traces through. So if we're looking at the budget versus actual, so the top right-hand corner is going to be T2C. So this is the start of our long spreadsheet of our certificate of estimated resources. What we're saying is estimated revenues and will be appropriate. I'm glad that it's, it's on one page right now, but it's the start of the year, so it's going to grow from here. But just want to point out, column B in the first row, the general fund, in blue, the beginning cash balance, 13 million, 870,633. So that's what we ended in the general fund for fiscal 19, probably a dollar or two rounding, but comes over and that's our beginning balance for cash. So we are going to have to update our five-year forecast, because again, the five-year forecast was from May. This is from 630. So we will update our five-year forecast come. And it's actually not going to be October, it's November. So it actually was pushed back for the new five-year forecast. We'll have to start saying November five-year forecast. But we can always approve in October. But we did better than what we thought last year, more favorable. So we start with 13.8 million beginning cash in the general fund. We can see all other funds that we have totaled as well. If we move over on that top line, the general fund, to the right, and we look at column H, that's our update tonight, date 21, 2019, for estimated revenues. Now, the amount that we have, we haven't changed it for this meeting, 15 million, 682,486. So that's the amount that we're estimating we're going to bring in for revenue as of the May five-year forecast that we're following. Again, that's going to be, you know, it's going to, this is a living document as we go, so it's going to change. But if we look at the five-year forecast, and I have it colored in orange, line 2.080, total revenues and other financing sources for fiscal 20 is 15 million, 682,486. So that's our total revenue that we're estimating for fiscal 20 on our long sheet, as well as coming from the five-year forecast. So it traces out. If we keep moving over, column K, that's going to be our original appropriations. So before, we did a temporary appropriations just to have something legally to go off of, to be able to spend money. This is our original First Amendment of that as we go through the year. We actually have one change, which is going to be for Fund 300. So I'll talk about that for both revenue and expenses. But I wanted to point out before I do that, for the general fund, for appropriations for what we're looking at, 16 million, 664,983. We look at our five-year forecast, line 5.050, total expenditure and other financing uses is 16 million, 664,983. So we're staying to the plan and the five-year forecast until that changes as we go. So tonight we have a recommendation, T3, is going to be the update modification of the appropriations. For that, the box at the very bottom of column K... For that, the box at the very bottom of column K has an A in it. There's a little A next to that number, one hundred and sixty-five thousand, three ninety-one. So we're reducing the appropriations in Fund 300, which is our athletic fund, from what it was in column J, one hundred and ninety thousand, to one hundred and sixty-five thousand, three hundred ninety-one dollars. So that's a reduction of twenty-four thousand, six hundred nine dollars. And that comes from working with Mr. Kelber, our athletic director, as well as looking at other areas of the budget that we have. And one thing I was kind of pondering was having Ryan come out to do a presentation on the athletic budget from the board, maybe a quick 15-minute presentation just to, you know, kind of how he comes to be with, you know, cheerleading and baseball and football. And one thing about football too is, and actually putting money on us making the playoffs. So I actually allocated money in the revenue side for the playoffs. You know, playoffs, so. Basically, put your money where your mouth is, so I'm banking on we're going to have revenue for the playoff, you know, football, so.
So you're telling me that they, Mr. Kelber is thinking that they're going to spend less money in the athletic funds?
Well, yeah, the, the temporary appropriations is just kind of an idea of what we're going to spend. That's why it's called temporary. So we throw a number out there and, you know, as we start sitting down and going through kind of, you know, what's going to be needed. And then he brings that to, you know, Mr. Evans as well, and we talk about, okay, this is what's needed for athletics this year, which is one hundred and fifty-four thousand for the athletic budget, along with other, you know, items that were all in that 300 fund, which total, and we have that in the spreadsheet too that we can take a look at as we go. So maybe we look at the expenditures and revenues for the athletic fund to wrap up the financials. But yeah, at this point in time, we're looking at a reduction of about twenty-four thousand dollars in athletics.
Okay.
Is, is that why then there's like, like negative balances then in the thin sum? Is because those appropriations are, are going out in, in advance then?
Yeah, some of those funds, you know, some grant funds we go negative on in the thin sum.
Yeah, okay.
Others, you know, there's some things that, you know, we may have booked something in one line item that we still have to move over to clear off that negative in another line item as we go. They're different things as. So again, this budget versus actual is always going to show our beginning totals for what we have, what we're estimating as far as revenues. The two solid blue columns, total revenues, column I, and total expenditures, column L, those will always be updated every month as we populate with expenditures as we close July, August, and so forth. I actually have those hidden in the sheet. If I was able to print it off a lot larger, you'd see each month's worth of expenditures that we can total, so. And then we have our ending cash balance. The pink number highlighted, fifteen million, seven hundred eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty, traces to T2D, and that's in that box below in pink, lead sheet. So that's actually the next page over. And that's our ending cash as of July 31st, 2019. You can see our encumbrances in column N, and then we can see our ending unencumbered balance. The only fund that we have a negative at this point in time is the food service fund, and that's only because we did our bulk food purchases as purchase orders. So we do blanket purchase orders for milk, vegetables, fruit, breads, cookies, ice cream. We don't pay that all, all off in July, but we pay it as we go every month, but we still encumber all those funds, which is why we have a negative that we're seeing now, but our ending cash is about a hundred thousand, ninety-six thousand dollars there. So every month, we're going to spend a little more from that fund to reduce those purchase orders. But we know that fund's not self-sustaining, so we have to do a transfer from the general. There are no questions. I'll move on to the next sheet that we have. Next sheet is going to be T2D. This is our lead sheet for fiscal year 20. It has all the green in the middle, which are estimated numbers. So again, we have our beginning balance, top left, column B, row one. So that beginning balance is the thirteen million, eight hundred seventy thousand, six hundred thirty-three dollar amount that we ended fiscal 19 with. So that's our starting number. Then we can see all actuals in the month of July that we brought in. So row two, again, we're column B, two million, seven hundred and four thousand dollars, and that was general property taxes. And we'll look, you know, and see that amount where that was calculated as well. All the estimates that we have follow suit to the five-year forecast. So if we kind of travel all the way across to column N that we have here, if we look at row two, the total from the month of July's actual, plus all the estimated amounts in the months that we have, is eight million, six hundred fifty thousand even. And if we look at our five-year forecast in column 2020, and we look at the first row, 1.010, that amount is eight million, six hundred fifty thousand, which ties to it. So all the amounts in column N tie to that column in the five-year forecast. So if I go down, 2.5 million is the tangible personal property tax, six hundred thousands for the unrestricted grants and aid. Restricted grants and aid is going to be a hundred and six thousand, four thirty-five. Two million, five hundred ninety-four thousand, fifty-one dollars for property tax allocation. One million, two hundred, three thousand for all their operating revenue. That gives us our orange total for what we certified as estimated revenue as of 6, 26, 2019, of fifteen million, six hundred eighty-two thousand, four hundred eighty-six dollars, which is our orange highlight on the five-year forecast for revenue. And then the same for expenses, eight million, four hundred ninety-three thousand, fifty-nine dollars for personnel services. Below that, we have employees' retirement and insurance benefits, three million, three hundred eighty-three thousand, nine hundred fifty-five dollars, traces to the five-year forecast that we have. Bless you. Below that, three million, five hundred thirty-seven thousand, one hundred eighty-six dollars for purchased services. Below that, five hundred ninety thousand, fifty-five dollars for supplies and materials. Below that, a hundred and fifty thousand for capital outlay. Below that, a couple lines, other objects, two hundred forty-nine thousand, five hundred forty-eight dollars, ties to the five-year forecast. Below that will be our transfers out, which is two hundred sixty-one thousand, one hundred eighty dollars. And then if we roll that up in the total, that is sixteen million, six hundred sixty-four thousand, nine hundred eighty-three dollars, what we appropriated. From the beginning of the year, we haven't changed that appropriated amount, and that ties to the five-year forecast. So the ending number that we have is a bit better than the five-year forecast. So our ending cash, row 31, column N, is twelve point eight million, rounded. The five-year forecast ending cash, which is seven point zero two zero, is twelve million, seventy-three thousand, five hundred thirty-three dollars. So about eight hundred thousand dollars difference, and that's due to the fact that we started better. So we started at thirteen point eight million dollars. Our beginning balance blew in the top left-hand corner. The May five-year forecast was thinking we would have started this year with thirteen million, fifty-six thousand, fifty dollars, and that's on row 7.010 in column fiscal, or 2020 for the five-year forecast. So once we update this five-year forecast with our actual numbers that we ended fiscal 19, it'll be more reflective and both will trace to the dollar. If we look to the next page, this is going to be our property tax revenue. We see the two million, seven hundred and four thousand that came in. We booked to row one, which is class one and two real property. Again, we have our estimate there for that one particular line, which is eight million, six hundred thousand. One thing I wanted to point out here is I did update the two boxes for delinquent taxes after it was updated by the county, as well as our collection percentage. So, you know, you have time to go back and look at fiscal 19 to compare to this, these figures here. The delinquent taxes is comparable, six hundred thousand, but where we have a difference is our collection year estimated tax revenue. We're at ninety-six point seven percent, and if I remember right, fiscal 19 was around ninety-five percent. So we're actually collecting better. And again, since we're crossing over, because our fiscal year ends 630, it's only accounting for the first half of the year. So we know that collection percentage. The second half of the year, we don't know that yet at this point. But we do know that we collected, safe to say, about a percentage point better, which equates to more revenue. So we know that this estimate here was conservative, so that will increase. So that's going to eat away at any type of deficit that coming into this year, nine hundred eighty-two thousand was the deficit. So we were starting with thirteen point eight million as our beginning balance and ending with twelve point eight million. So about a million-dollar deficit that we would have been looking this year, and that matches to the five-year forecast, that line 6.010, nine hundred eighty-two thousand, four hundred ninety-seven dollar deficit. But again, we're, we had some differing factors. We collected a lot more in delinquent taxes than we're estimating in this year. We had the settlements with Mr. Seeds, law firm. We are conservative in our estimate initially for general property taxes only because the collection percentages, it's so great, you know, one percentage point is a large differential. So, you know, again, we're, we're hopeful that, you know, we'll eat into that, but again, this is a very conservative estimate for, you know, the five-year forecast for what we're looking at, so. So if we continue, so if we flip the page from the tax revenue sheet, our T2F, which is our restricted, unrestricted state aid, there's really no change here at this point in time, but we'll look to update it, but it all matches to the May five-year forecast figures for what we have. If we flip to the next page, which is T2G, this is our, all their operating revenue and all their financing sources. Again, these figures match to the five-year forecast that we have. I do know that it's looking like row three, the SF tuition, and that's court and foster care place students into our district that Mr. O'Keefe works on, which we were approved this contract at the last board meeting. It's looking like the hundred and fifty thousand is going to be lower than what the actual is going to come in at, which is good. So our actuals is going to be a lot higher. But again, that's hard to estimate because we know about half the year's worth as we ended the 2018-19 school year, so we know we're going to collect that first half of this calendar year, which is the second half of the last school year. But we don't know if that's going to carry on to the second half of the calendar year, which is the first half of this school year. Those court place students could easily be taken out of the home here and be given back to a different district. So there's a lot of movement potential there. So there's a risk that you don't want to estimate too high with the court and foster care place students. So there's a conservative estimate there, but we're going to, you know, go higher than that. We can see rows five, six, and seven, the interest on investments. You know, I'm going to touch base on that a little bit later tonight too, because we were talking about investing at the last board meeting. So I'll bring that up in discussion comments. But the estimates that we have here, we're already, you know, we should be at eight percent, but the percentage points are around eighteen, so we're up, you know, performing what our estimate was. So that's good. But we do know that the, the Federal Reserve reduced a quarter of a point in early August, I want to say. So it does look like, you know, maybe the rates were at their highest, and I have a couple of documents here that we'll look over too, just to look at the history of the rates, so.
I thought we had something coming from the Huntington checking.
The what?
Line seven?
Yes, we actually had nothing come in July for that, because we have to have so much of a balance in that account to generate interest. So that's our general operating. So if we don't, I'll throw a number out, if we don't hold a million dollars in there and we're carrying seven hundred and fifty thousand, we don't have enough to, we have to carry so much in there to generate interest to pass the line. So it's actually kind of more beneficial that we keep more money in STAR, which gives us a two point five percent, as opposed to Huntington, which gives us point five. So we get a lot more interest. So they, you know, it's more beneficial, but just as a rule of thumb, we'd like to, for cash flow purposes, like to keep around a million, million five in our general operating account just for payrolls that we have, as well as large check runs and expenditures that we have come through, so. So if we see a zero there, it's because we haven't hit that threshold line from Huntington Bank. And that just means, you know, we had thirteen million, four hundred and twenty-four thousand in STAR, which is a very large amount. That's, you know, getting two point four percent, as opposed to if we kept, you know, a little bit more. So there's a better return on investment actually if we go down.
As it looks like here, we're making thirty-five thousand dollars a month on interest.
Right. At this point in time, while the yield, while the percentages are still, they're still, you know, performing well. But again, we're going to look at the past history and it's going to be kind of sticker shock, I think, when everybody looks at just, you know, prior years that we had. And where the rates are at now and maybe where they're going to go in the future too. If I flip the page, there's really nothing on the second page for T2G. So if I go to payroll, which is going to be T2A screen, we do know that the budgets match to the five-year forecast or overall plan. We're doing good on our percentage points for salaries for certified, which is row one, and a non-certified row 10. Those are the biggies that I'm always looking at to make sure our percentages match to where they're going to be. Our three pay month is now in January. I think it was March last year, so that's just to note. And row two, we have substitutes and temporary certified employees. The budget's a hundred and thirty-five thousand, but I'm thinking that's going to have to be raised to at least over a hundred and sixty, if not more. You know, with teachers that we have out, we have long-term subs coming, those long-term subs would be expensed on that line here. I believe we do have more than we had last year, so that we'll have to look to increase it. If I flip to the next page, T2I, the next spreadsheet, blue, is going to be our retirement and insurance benefits. Our budget matches the five-year forecast. I'm hoping that workers' compensation, which is row 23, we have sixty-five thousand dollars budgeted. I'm hoping that's going to be significantly less. I'm hoping under fifty. Have my fingers crossed on that. I don't have off the top of my head, but I do know medical insurance was estimated high. I want to say around 10%, but maybe even higher. And the consortium just voted on the increase in rates. We're talking about five percent, so. The conservative estimate was a lot higher than what it's actually going to be for health insurance. But again, we can take that difference and move it to the long-term subs for the personnel. It kind of just fits that hole that we have there. If we flip to our next spreadsheet, which is purchased services, T2J, we have our overall budget of three million, five hundred thirty-seven thousand, one hundred eighty-six dollars. And the one thing I don't like about the current state software that we're using, and we're going to have a presentation, come do it, a future board meeting from Neonet to talk about the new software, is the budgets really don't stay intact, that they kind of wipe away and they start at zero and then you have to go through. So it's going through every line that we have here and updating the budgets that we have in our overall master accounting software, so. It's kind of, it's kind of funny how it all works, but, but I like doing it one at a time too, because then you know, okay, I know 500s in, you know, line one that I have band uniform cleaning, I know it's going to be 1,200, so. It's, while it's not maybe the most efficient software, I kind, I do kind of like going line by line and I know every, you know, I'm putting it in, you know, it's not just, you know, maybe adjusting by a percentage point that you would have or something for expenses. And then we can see the allocation among that three point five million for purchased services among all our funds that we have. On the second page, one thing I've changed was repair and maintenance. I wanted to organize that in more of a useful way to look at it, so I put it in block segments. So the first, 65, 66, and 67 are going to be for the bus garage. 68 through 81 is going to be for the overall district. 82 through 88 would be the district grounds. 89 through 97 is the elementary school, and then 98 through 105 is going to be the high school. So it just gives maybe a, you know, more organized picture of all of our repair and maintenance items that we have. Flipping through, kind of did the same thing with our tuition payments, rows 173 through 186. So what I did there is I blocked out 173 and 174 together, so that's the Monarch Autism School.
That's the Monarch's mentor?
No, no, that's not, I'm sorry.
Belfer.
Yep. Yeah.
Monarch's Belfer.
Right. Then we have pep apprentice, the pep medical aid for thirty thousand. 177 is going to be the high school tuition for the Cleveland Autism School. Then the block for 178 to 183 is everything deducted from us from our foundation settlement. So we have college credit plus the community school charter school deductions, the scholarship deductions, any SF students that we would have to pay out. So we get money for court place students, but those districts are paying us essentially through there, so we do the same thing if we have any students going out. And then we have row 183, which is the foundation settlement. That's the roll-up of Independence Board of Education students that we have attending there, as well as the Mentor Board of Education. So when we do those contracts with Independence and Mentor to send students there, we're not necessarily cutting them a check, but rather the money's getting deducted from our foundation settlement automatically. There is thirty-five thousand sitting on 186, and that's because we have a contract for about sixty-six thousand, I want to say, with Mentor Schools. Mentor likes to do a unique thing where they bill us for half of it and they take half of it out of the foundation settlement, so. Flipping through to the next set. Flipping through to the next set, we have supplies and materials. I won't go into the weeds too much on this, but the overall budget is 590,000 and allocated among all the accounts that we have there. After supplies and materials, we have capital outlet, so we can see the new equipment that we have. We budget the bulk amounts on the new equipment lines, and we build separate accounts as we build each item that we have. If I flip the page to T2M, other objects, nothing, you know, there is substantial overall budget that we have. The last page that we have is going to be a transfer doubt, and we'll kind of touch base on that tonight, too. We transfer money out of the general fund to the three fund to pay off our debt, as well as to help two other funds, the 300 Fund, Athletics, and the Sixth Fund, Food Service. We have a transfer set for payments 25 and 26 of our HB264 debt payment, and there are 30 payments total. So each payment's about 43,000, so the two add up to about 86,000. So that's the amount we're transferring out of the general fund to the three fund to pay that debt. And there are two payments every year that we have. No questions? Let's see, the appropriate, yeah, the permanent appropriation modification, kind of addressed that in the budget versus actual, I think, drop of 24,000. We'll take a, actually, let's take a look at the athletic fund, I think we're talking about that one. It's going to be on our computers, so we may have to go to content, and we'll open, I'll just do the expense side, T2P. We open that one, that's going to be the athletic fund budget. And we can see the upper right-hand corner. Maria, you would have, you have that printed out for you, too? But you can see it either way.
In here?
Yep.
Okay.
We can see the 165,391 overall budget in the top right-hand corner. And then one thing I did was I put kind of a bracket around the athletic fund, which is the 300-9500 special cost center, and I put in green what the budget is for just that bracket, which is 154,000, kind of make it a little cleaner to see. And that's what Ryan Kelber, our athletic director, is going through and allocating so much to each sport for the budget, which totals up to 154,000. Then we have a couple others. We have orchestra, band, and choir, and the cheerleading fundraiser. We have one cheerleading fundraiser that the district primarily handles, and that's a Chipotle cheerleading fundraiser that they do, that they hook that revenue for Chipotle night on that one line, on the very first one.
Where do the rest of their fundraisers go?
They go to the boosters.
Okay.
All athletics.
Athletic boosters?
Yeah, like 99% of fundraisers for athletics go to the boosters, but the one that we, that the district kind of keeps track of is the Chipotle fundraiser for the cheerleaders.
Mr. Kelber and I had a discussion about that today, some of the expenses for the cheerleaders have really kind of skyrocketed about working with the cheerleader advisor, about maybe getting those under control a little bit.
So that shows us, you know, another picture of the 300 Fund budget, 165. If we keep going the agenda, new vendors that we have, nothing tonight was too significant. Are there any questions on the new vendors that we have, which was 6C? If not, 6D is to authorize the super tenant and treasurer to enter into the consortium with the ESC of Northeast Ohio. If I could please, did you want to?
I agree.
Yep.
We entered into agreement with ESC in terms of our gifted funding. We have our gifted supervisor, this is Amy Cruz, who we pay to all days of a consulting fee to come out here, and we're in the bus in terms of making sure we're compliant with our gifted services and web and things of that nature. $624 comes to the school district for gifted funding. Basically, what we do is we enter into an agreement with the ESC, they kind of manage that money for us on the front end, and we send them documentation of how we spent our, you know, for supplies, our things for gifted, and we get that reimbursed from the ESC at the end of the school year. So it's, they're just kind of managing the money for us, very similar to what they do in terms of our IDA money or special equipment.
And that concludes the recommendation portion I have.
Okay, so at this time, any other discussion with Treasurer before he gives us that one? Okay, so can we have a phone call, please?
Mrs. Edder.
Aye.
Mr. Gobbins.
Aye.
Mr. Naaman.
Aye.
Mr. Suchaki.
Aye.
Mr. Shuker.
Aye, motion P S five-zero, discussions zero.
Just a couple, too. First item is the payoff of the HB264 debt. I have two items uploaded. We have the payoff letter, and then we have the amortization schedule, which goes along with it. Just a.
Probably the fifth payoff letter I got from PNC. It's been interesting. But in short, if we open that amortization schedule, we can see for payment 25, and I have highlighted in orange, they're saying that one payment of 43,000 along with the purchase price, total of 207,000. The change doesn't add up to their letter, I think their letter is 207,125 and eighty-some cents, or the amortization schedule's 207,125 and 62 cents, I believe. But since we're so close, it was the fifth letter, I said, I'm not going to complain. So I went along with it. And then the right-hand side for remaining owed, I added up everything, so payment 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30, 43,090 and one penny, total 258,540 and six cents. That's what we owe for HB264 debt remaining. PNC is telling us our payoff amount, which doesn't have to be made until January of 2020, so we have time to discuss this and then come back at another board meeting. They wouldn't let us pay it earlier, ask them, they just wouldn't. So January of 2020 is the day that they're holding that for us to work on this payoff. The payoff amount that they put in the letter is 250,215 and 86 cents. So if we subtract that from the total that we owe, we're looking at about $8,300 worth that we don't have to pay to PNC if we pay it off early. And again, we would transfer from the general fund about 250,000 to the three fund to pay PNC. So it does affect our bottom line this year. We did plan for, you know, the five-year forecast to pay off that debt, we're just paying it off earlier. So our expenses could be, you know, a bit increased because of the additional 200 and some thousand dollar overall payment that we have just this year, but not the overall balance of the five-year.
But it's money we had to pay anyway.
Yes, yeah, it would have been in the future years that we have. So this year we see a spike, but other years it's going to work its way out. You know, we do know that the interest rates that we've been getting, and we're going to look more at that in a little bit, is about 2.5, and we know the interest rate on the debt, if we look at the very top, is 3.98%, that they've been charging us, so.
It seems like it makes sense.
It would seem to make sense. I did try running a spreadsheet, though, and I didn't do it right, so I have to go back and try it again before I say anything, and it's positive or specific about it, but it seemed to indicate that if we kept the money and then, you know, kept the 207,000, and then next year it would be down to 167,000, right? If we kept that in STAR Ohio or the other, that it seemed to earn more than the $8,000, but I got to go and play with that again. I don't know that I did it right.
You also have to factor in that the feds has lowered the rates, that's probably a draw.
Right, it potentially goes down, so no matter what we do, it's all.
It's all, it's good. It's like, it seems like it's, if you're, if it's 3.9 is what we're paying out, and then, you know, it's, we're probably gaining at least a point and a half, at least a percentage point over that spread then, I think. So that would seem like that makes sense.
It does seem to make sense that way, but I still want to play with it a little bit more, just to be sure. I talked with Mr. Mucci earlier and didn't have a chance to actually sit down and play with it, so I do want to play with it a little bit more, but from what we see here, it makes sense.
I like the idea. I think especially if it gives us more options moving forward with building construction and stuff like that, grants, what have you. I think it's good to be going debt-free, especially going into, you know, a fall levy in a year.
Since I was in here back in 2008, what was this? What was this loan?
That was renovation money, windows, actually, to go, the irony of it, it was to pay for the fluorescent lights that are now obsolete in the building. So we're still paying on obsolete lighting. But windows were replaced, some window, some insulation, and some heating, and some air conditioning in the elementary building was added.
So operational costs, like update.
It was, it was a building improvement, and 264 money was available, and the district decided that that was the.
To take it.
Best route to go ahead.
And the interest rate at the time was probably very good.
Yeah. Anyway, with the interest rates, it's like, I don't really see a downside as long as what we would have paid out versus what we would have gained in an investment, as long as that's above, or what's projected to be above. It seems like it's a, it's a total win for us then.
So we can hold off on this, not have it at the next meeting, because PNC's locked that in January 2020, so we can, you know, put this on as a discussion item for the next board meeting as well, and then we'll see, you know, go from there and move forward.
Yeah, I think once I fix my spreadsheet, it's going to show that this is the right thing to do.
Hopefully. You might have to call Joe or Matt.
But I did it too quickly, and I didn't look at enough detail to do it correctly, so I got to go back and play again, and I'll feel better.
The next item I have tonight is a, we have a presentation scheduled with Neonet to come out September 18th, which is going to maybe be a long meeting, because we're also having GPD come out to that meeting through September.
What would you know about a long meeting?
Hey, we're doing another.
Honest to God. Lyndy, are you looking?
I'm just laughing.
He's going to leave me five minutes to go through my stuff.
Yeah, puts you under pressure.
I think both of those presentations will be nice, though, because I feel like they're like.
It's going to be good.
We're due for Neonet, I mean, you know, they haven't been here, probably Neonet hasn't been here three or four years, and I, and I said to Matt, I said, I went like Matt Godovin to just talk about all the services that they provide for us, and it came up in the conversation when we talked about the maps and some of the, you know, the different A sites that are available to us, and I still think we're getting a pretty good bank for our buck with Neonet, but I want you to be able to ask them questions and hear from them, so.
Have you seen them yet?
No. But they came out for the USAS presentation. Is it USAS, the software? I saw that, but that's all I have, not Mr. Mr.
Yeah, so it must have been before that, then. I do remember them being here and giving us folders and talking about all the services they had, but that's got to be a while back.
Not, I wasn't.
I know that, that's why I was asking, Mark.
And there's the attachment there in the email, just confirming the timeframe, and we're going to have Matt Godovin, who's their director, as well as Kim Fasnot, which is their fiscal officer, so the two of them are going to come. And then about 30-minute presentation, half is going to be on the software, state software redesign and e-finance plus, as well as the services offerings that Neonet provides. And then the last item I have for discussion is, if everybody can take one down, interest rates. We were talking about whether we want to invest more in Redtree at the last board meeting. Just wanted to pass two items down.
Come on, come on.
So one page is a screenshot of the Treasurer of State's website, and on it, we can see, it says investor data, it's in landscape mode. It has the different rates, interest rates, that STAR Ohio has been paying out. So we can see in January of 2015, .05% to where it's now July of 2019, 2.42%. So it has increased dramatically over the years.
But it's already going now.
And it is already going, yes. These rates are as of the last day of the month, and the rates that we see that are on our spreadsheets differ a little bit. And I called STAR Ohio, and I said, "STAR, your guys' rates don't match to what our statement's showing." And it took them a little while to figure it out, but our rates are blended rate for the whole month. So it adds up day one through day 30 or 31, and it blends all of those different daily rates together to give us one rate that they put on the STAR statement. Here, they're just choosing the very last day of the month and putting that amount in, so that's why they differ a little bit. But yes, we can see that, you know, we've been lucky at this point in time, they have gone up, and they are starting to potentially go down. The next handout I have is an email from Ryan Nelson at Redtree, and I won't read through all of it, but that second paragraph, I just wanted to read. Ryan goes, "Since the beginning of 2019, market yields have substantially decreased. To illustrate, we look back to January of this year. The yield on a two-year treasury was approximately 2.5%, yielding essentially the same as STAR Ohio. Fast forward to June of this year, and STAR is relatively unchanged, while the two-year treasury yield has drastically decreased nearly 24% to below 1.9%. While much of the domestic economic data remains positive, worries about a prolonged trade war and slow growth overseas have led yields to begin reflecting anticipated rate cuts by the Federal Reserve. While we have been enjoying higher yields offered since rates began increasing in 2015, we have been anticipating the end of the current rate hike cycle since late last year. Beginning in the fourth quarter of 2018, we have been prudently extending the average maturity of portfolios to mitigate a potentially lower interest rate environment ahead." So what they've been doing is they've been investing in CDs longer, so three or four years out. One thing we want to look at, too, when we invest, is just what are our investments in? And if we are able to open, go back to 6A, I just want to point this out to everybody. If we click on content and we open the bank reconciliation, T2A.
T2A?
T2A is not even, oh.
Yep, and then we'll want to scroll down to page, doesn't really give it to me on here, yep, it does, Eight of Twelve. So T2A is what we're going to want to open, and then once we open it, it's, that's the bank reconciliation, T2A, and then it's about 12 pages, and we want the eighth one. And it's going to say Redtree Investment Group, and it's going to show our investments. But I wanted to point out is exactly where Redtree is investing our money. We have a small amount in U.S. Treasury bills, about 137,000. The majority of our investments reside in certificates of deposit, and we have a handful of commercial paper, but we are investing in CDs. The CDs have dramatically higher yields as they go out in few, in longer years. So if we look at the CDs, there's about 10. The very last one is coming due 4/10 of 2024. If we look at our five-year forecast, around 2023's fiscal year, the general fund's expected to have 2.9 million dollars, and we know about 1.5 is what we need for about cash flow. And this is just the general fund that we have here. So that's about a million-dollar difference that we have. We don't want to maybe lock funds for too long, because we have about a million dollars locked in for 2023 and '24. So we can see that the Wells Fargo, 200 some thousand, is due 3/13/23, below that, 3/15/23, below that, 12/12/23, below that, 2/20/24, and the last one, Wells Fargo, 4/10/24. So if you total all that up, it's shy of a million, but close to it. So we just want to be cognizant on investing, because the way to kind of maybe overcome, if the market is on a downward trend, is locking in maybe a CD at a longer period of time. But we don't want to lock in too much of our money, because we know we're starting to go down on that slope, deficit spending, and we don't want to have a bunch of our money sitting in CDs in 2023 and '24 that is going to be extremely hard to pull out.
You can't pull, you can't change what is correct without penalty or something like that?
Yeah.
Okay. So we're locked into what's on the statement.
Yeah, and we're also locked into Redtree for the next five years, too.
So it's
I didn't realize that.
Just on that one, on that one CD, that's the, that's the longest one. Everything else, so
Yeah, I recognize that.
The point Matt's getting to is that we need to make sure that whatever future investments we have are a little bit more short term, and that Redtree's not
Does not seem to fit that, yeah.
And we, we do. If we look at CDs, you know, the very top ones are due, you know, 1217 of 2020. And we can see the purchase date was 1217 2018. So, you know, it's showing us all of the due dates, as well as the purchase dates, which is the very far column. So, you know, we, yes, we just wanna be cognizant of the fact that we don't wanna lock our money, too much of it, you know, too far on. And we're also, you know, we know rates are dipping down. We do know Star Ohio, which is managed by the state treasurer, is very favorable. We know Redtree is, you know, they kinda, where they really, you know, get you is they can lock you in at longer CDs where those and look at the yields on the longer ones as opposed to the ones that are due within, you know, a year or two. So our 2.5 that we're getting for our money just sitting there also comes at a premium, because we have that ability to pull it out next day and use it if we have to. But we're also gaining a healthy amount of interest. But we do know that the horizon, you know, I mean, if we fall back to, you know, 2015's timeframe of interest rates, I mean, then we, then we're playing the game of locking it in and pulling it out and monitoring cash flow just to maximize our interest. But at this point in time, you know, unless the Fed comes out maybe with a very significant rate cut, my recommendation would be maybe not to lock in anything further. And at this point in time, Redtree's, I mean, they kind of go with the rule of thumb of like three years out. So if we're coming close to the fourth quarter of 2019, which time's flying by, I mean, we're looking to have those locked in till 24.
So is this like, I mean, where do we go to take action? Do you have to make a motion?
No, no, this is just general discussion. So we're just talking about investing. And I, I think where we're at now, what we're currently doing with having about 70% of our funds invested in Star, which we're getting a, you know, reasonable rate, and we have about 25%, you can say, in Redtree. But it's spread out, you know, locked in certain phases, certain years, getting different rates. I think we're in a favorable spot at this point in time, unless the Fed comes out with a, a deep reduction in interest rates. And then maybe we really explore, you know, monitoring that cash flow and locking in some cash and long-term investments that we have. But again, for us, we know our trend is going down, because we're losing, you know, the phase out of the TPP, which is about 200,000 every year. And we do know that there are step increases with the teachers and the CBAs, or, you know, those are coming due soon. So it's just monitoring, you know, just making sure what we said and just knowing our position.
So are you thinking of adjusting the percentages going forward? Are you thinking of putting more in Star and less in Redtree? Is that what you're trying to say?
No, I think, I think where we're at
You're thinking of leaving it at 70, 30?
Yeah, I think where we're at now is, you know, just keep
You don't know what the next CD is. It could be 2027. They might, that's unlikely. I'm exaggerating, but
That's what I was wondering, like, do they even, they just do this? Like, we've hired them to do this, so we don't have
We can call them, and we can talk and say, hey, how are the rates looking on the CDs, you know, for investing in the next couple, you know, if we have a million dollars to give you, let, let us know the rates on the CDs that they have going forward. They can do that. But just because we are deficit spending and just knowing cash flow, I just get concerned about locking too much in, too far out.
Right.
I'd rather err on the side of, it's not a dramatic difference between, you are paying to lock that money in, so you're paying kind of, you know, you're not gonna have it to use, and then you get a higher interest rate back.
But why wouldn't we do that now? Like, why wouldn't we tell Redtree to hold off? I, I guess kind of along the lines of what Barry was saying, like, you know, the next one could be another 2024. Like, why would we not?
Oh, yeah. So you're talking about the ones that are already in Redtree and telling them to hold off on investing even longer?
No.
No, I think what I'm saying is, why, why are we still sending?
We're not.
Do we wanna consider sending more money to Star and less to Redtree as, I don't know how you do the investments. When do you send the money?
Well, right.
How does this really work?
We have, let's say we have 15 million in cash. And then it's, well, how much do we wanna put in Star? How much do we wanna give Redtree? And how much do we wanna hold in Huntington for daily operations that we have? So it's that delicate balance. We like to hold maybe about 1 million, 1.5 in Huntington for operations. Payrolls that we have come due every two weeks, checks that come.
So when that goes below the income, so, so you've been holding it at 1 million, and now, now you need to bring it back up, because it's down to 600,000, whatever. You need to bring it back up, but if you haven't had income coming in, where are you getting the money to bring it back up?
We take it from Star. The Star has that liquidity.
Always take it from Star.
Always take it from Star. We don't touch Redtree. So Redtree's kind of, you know, locked in.
But when we have a surplus, then what do we do?
Circles of cash, we give it to Star at this point in time. We have not given it to Redtree to lock in for future rates. Everything's
So that's
That, that explains where I was going.
That's good, right?
Yeah. So that sounds like what we should be doing.
Right.
That does make sense to me.
Yeah. And the rates have been close. We've been measuring them all last year between Star and Redtree, so there's no real significant difference. Even this month, we're at 2.4, I think for Star, and 2.8. But it's all averaged out, because they're going with longer investments, too. So we just have to keep that in mind when we see Redtree so much higher than Star. It's because some of those are locked in till 2023 and 24 in CDs for a higher yield. So we can't, you know, that money's locked in.
Does Redtree automatically reinvest, or?
They, they work with us, and, but they kind of do it on their own. They have discretion to kind of say, hey, this has come due. I'm gonna, you know, unless I hear something from the district, I'm gonna, you know, and so they have that autonomy to
But that's what I'm talking about, is if they have that autonomy, can, should we help it?
We can, we can help it. We can say we're, you know, because we have, you know, we can see the horizon. We, you know, don't go and lock our funds for three years, but maybe one-year CDs. We do know it's gonna be a lot, you know, a lower yield than a higher one would be with the lower ones. I don't think we're at that point yet to really worry about it, you know. But, you know, just knowing where we sit positionally is just good to know, and I think where we're at currently is a good idea.
Yeah, I don't think Anderson did this very well at all until
It looks like only one comes due in the next year anyway. So that would be, so you're looking at after the 1217 of 20, the next one that comes due is like 125 of 21.
Yep.
So you're, you're looking at like a, almost a little bit more over a year out anyway, before you even have to make that decision.
Yeah.
Just, this is a question, just to start out there. What is the penalty if we actually, if we have to withdraw these early, you know, or just as a ballpark?
I don't, I don't know. But I do know that there are unfavorable, I don't know, I shouldn't say that, I don't know.
Yeah, we aren't gonna get there.
Yeah.
We shouldn't do that.
We're out to 2023, and we're, oh, that's, well, but we still aren't out of money, right? Looking at your five-year forecast, we don't run out of money in the five-year forecast.
Right, right. But it's just saying that, you know, 1.5 we're gonna need just for cash management.
We'd anticipate being on the bell before that, because of that point, anyhow.
Right.
Right. But, but I think where we're at now is a good spot, you know, hoping the rates still And that's all I have for tonight.
Sure?
Okay. Moving on to Mr. Evans.
Okay, approval of purchase orders over $5,000. Motion to approve the attached list of purchase orders over $5,000. 10 staff resignations, accept the resignation, motion to accept the resignation of Kristen Rex from the supplemental staff position of kindergarten team leader effective for the 1920 school year. Motion to accept the resignation of Nicole DeSantis from the position of elementary long-term substitute teacher effective August 19th, 2019. No, no employment of certified staff, employment of classified staff. Motion to approve the agreement regarding the reemployment of Sandy Riley as an exempt secretary for the Cog High School District for a period of January 1 through June 30th of 2020. Employment supplemental positions, motion to approve employment of the attached list of individuals on supplemental contracts in the stipulated positions for 2019-20 school year for the adopted weight schedule contingent upon successful completion of BCI FBI fingerprint checks and proper certification if applicable. 14 employment substitutes volunteers. A, motion to approve this attached substitute teacher list for 2019-20 as created by the ESC of Northeast Ohio. Approve employment of substitute guidance counselor. Motion to approve employment of Nancy Rich as a substitute guidance counselor at the elementary school during the 1920 school year at a daily rate of 325, not to exceed 30 days. Agreements, contracts, and memberships, 15. A, motion to approve an agreement and purchase order with the Educational Service Center in Northeast Ohio for providing visual services for students residing in the Cog High School District for the 1920 school year at a cost not to exceed $1,500. B, motion to approve an agreement and purchase order with the Educational Service Center in Northeast Ohio for providing audiology services for students residing in the Cog High School District for the 1920 school year at a cost not to exceed $1,500. C, motion to approve an agreement, purchase order with Belfair JCB Monarch School for providing special education and related services to qualified students who reside in the Cog High School District for the 1920 school year at a cost of $163,770. D, motion to approve special education agreement, purchase order with Mentor City School Cares Program paid via CHS District's Foundation Fund for half of the tuition not to exceed $35,000, effective August 19th, 2019 to May 28th, 2020. E, motion to, motion to approve the agreement, purchase order with ESC of Northeast Ohio for additional aid for students residing in the CHS District and attending Pep Prentice for 1920 not to exceed $30,000. F, motion to approve, motion to approve purchase order, ESC Northeast Ohio for additional tuition costs for two students attending Pep Prentice for 1920 at a cost of $8,004. G, a motion to approve renewal of ILEC service agreement with AT&amp;T for ISDN Prime Service for a 36-month period effective August 21st, 2019.
Hearing the superintendent, superintendent's consent agenda, can I have a motion to approve the superintendent's business consent agenda motions?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Suchacki.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Naaman. Discussion.
Couple things on the $5,000, over $5,000. Corporate floors, there's not, there's not additional quotes. Corporate floor is the only one that can match the existing floor down there, so that's why there's one quote for them, and then the other companies can match that flooring. We're doing a Tim O'Keefe in advance. That'll help us as those come in. You know, Tim's been a great asset to us. And the Life Fitness, you see some other quotes attached. Life Fitness is the only one that quoted, well, I shouldn't say that the other, that MF Fitness quoted also what they consider to be commercial-grade equipment, and the reviews on them were terrible. I went online, and there wasn't one review that was above one star for any of their equipment. So even though that is quite a bit of a cost difference, I, it doesn't do us any good if the equipment lasts a year and then we're replacing it.
So you're saying the ones from the health and fitness one?
Correct.
Okay.
And then the other company, the other quotes were on, that's not commercial-grade equipment on the sole, those sole, sole does not have, they only have a home-grade equipment. So Life Fitness is probably the predominant company anymore in the fitness centers.
Thank you for doing the research.
On the agreements, the visual services, the audiology, that's on an absentee basis to the ESC. Monarch, we have two students at Monarch at that, on that contract at that cost. And the mentor is a student. The Pep is a one-on-one aide that's called for in the, that's called for in the student's IDP. We, we approved Pep, and then we added the aide last year, and they just didn't add the aide in the contract this year. The Pep Prentice, $8,000 additional, that's, that's where the error was made in last month's purchase order. This is the difference. It was one, I think 160 was the, was the motion, so, and there was an $8,000 difference, so this is, this is the additional motion to make up the difference on that. And DSI, that's just an ongoing service agreement. That's a renewal of the service agreement that we already have in place with them.
Any more discussion on, it's back to the weight equipment room. There was nothing in between, 41,000 and 21,000.
I, I sent out multiple emails, and those were the quotes I got back. Actually, the third quote I had to reach out for and kind of pull myself, so.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Suchacki.
Hi.
Mr. Naaman.
Hi.
Mrs. Edder.
Hi.
Mr. Dobbins.
Hi.
Mrs. Schukert.
Hi. Motion passes five to zero. Superintendent's comments.
We have one more retirement that's not, that came in, it is, that's not here, that'll be on the next meeting, Dave Dzalowski, who's one around here. Steele has announced his retirement effective December 31st. So we'll not only have the Sandy Riley farewell tour, we'll have the Dave Dzalowski farewell tour as well.
When's he retiring?
December 31st. So I want to thank Mr. Dobbins and Mrs. Schukert for coming to the opening convocation. A great opening, great day, a great opening in the school year. Just so the board, I don't think you've gotten any phone calls yet about the heat, but we did, I told Neil, we, we sampled some portable air conditioning units in the main office this summer, because the unit vests simply are not repairable. And it, and it was working, so I said, we know we don't have enough power on this west end of the building to redo our air and add air conditioning without redoing the electricals. So I said, start adding portable units until we start popping breakers, and then they stop. So we put, the first day, we, we did the three sixth-grade classrooms, so we didn't melt any sixth graders yesterday or today. And today, we added three in this hallway out here with the seventh and eighth grade team. Mr. Tartara and Mrs. Winerka came to me and said, we wanna be last. They said, we can gut it out. We can, we really don't need it if it, if it gets to that point, so I, while I thanked them, we took care of the other classrooms. So we're, we're kind of pecking away at the units where, actually, it's hard to find them right now, because they've been so popular. They're in the stores, Neil went today, had to go to a couple of different Home Depots to, to get the units that we needed. And then, and then they, you know, they, he said they brought Mrs. Nolan's room down from 88 degrees to about 78 degrees in about a half hour's time, so. Certainly, I, Neil may not retire now, because all those teachers were hugging him all day long. Smiling from ear to ear, so. But good start to the school year. I will have leaked passes for you. He just dropped them off yesterday for all the board members, so if you want to attend any athletics are underway. I went out to Keystone only to see the game rained out last night for the girls, but it was like, it was lightning. And it was, it was, the official came to me and said, it was not my fault, it's not my fault. It was the coaches. I said, listen, if we start this game at 8:30, our girls don't get home till 10:30 in the night. So that's a good call by the coach. That's a, yeah, that's a, that's a good, that's a good call by the coach. So, you know, football scrimmage this Friday was Clinton Central Catholic. This is kind of a game simulation type one. Unfortunately, we don't have a Week One football opponent, so, and then we'll, we'll get it going in Week Two. And with Hall of Fame, Athletic Hall of Fame coming up as well, so.
You gotta tell, yeah, why aren't we doing like an alumni football scrimmage? Imagine that?
I don't know. If somebody wants to get even, if Al lost, if Al got a kid hurt during an alumni scrimmage, he'd lose his mind. But everything's moving along, and great start to the year. The faves in, you know, we did the rolling start in the elementary building. That seemed to go over pretty well. We had a good turnout for the open houses. Wasn't too much crying going on when the, when they were here for the open house, dropping stuff off. So we'll, we'll sit as an admin team and discuss that. As a matter of fact, somebody said, can we do that in the middle school and high school? I said, no, we're just, you know, at that point in time, push them on the bus in the morning, and we're ready to go. So it's a good start. Great, great turnout last Friday night for the middle school, high school open house. I talked to a group of about 15 new parents, took them around the building for a tour, lots of good questions. Really, really excited with the start of the school year so far, so.
Were those all tuition parents, or?
I, I didn't, you know, some were tuitions, some were movements. I, I know that in the last week, I've signed two, two papers for people that have gone from tuition parents to moving into the district. I just got, just got two purchase agreements on my desk yesterday that we signed off on for the movement from the tuition program to residents, so. Once they sign the, once they sign the agreement, then we, we waive tuition for them, so, the purchase agreement, so. That's a good thing.
Moving on to, there's nothing to approve on board business, correct? So moving on to possible discussion items. Any discussion items for today? Hearing none. How about comments? Any board comments, committee reports, future items or later on? Okay. I just wanna make sure they're there.
Yeah, I'm looking to make sure he does.
Okay, so, Joe, Mr. Naaman.
No, it's, it's great to start the new school year with everybody. And everybody's welcome back from summer. Glad it was healthy and, you know, healthy summer. And I guess just best of luck to all the sports teams, as they started all their programs over the last couple of weeks, so that's about it.
You're up, Mrs. Edder.
I would just say thanks to everybody who worked through the summer to get things up and running and in tip-top shape for our beginning of this school year. And good luck, good luck to our students. Do well.
I guess I'm next.
I guess.
One of the handouts that we have, believe it or not, is a I guess. One of the handouts that we have, believe it or not, is the Tax Incentive, or Tax Review Council Meeting, TIRC, it's also known as Tax Incentive Review Committee. Mr. Mucciio and I just, you know, discussed who should talk about this since we were both at the meeting. And I figured he probably had enough to, probably had enough to talk about on his own agenda. So I took this into my section. The important pages are, actually, they're about halfway through. There's one marked second amended and restated tax incentive donation agreement. You can find that page and then go to the back of it. That shows that Charter Steel is continuing to pay us as a, as part of their tax incentive in lieu of property taxes. They're paying us a hundred thousand five hundred and thirteen dollars a year. And this is the last, twenty twenty is the last, twenty twenty-one is the last year that, for that payment. Then if you go to the last page of the document, it shows the rest of it because the village, it's Cog Heights Village, is giving us two hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars a year as part of their share of the payroll tax. That will also end in twenty twenty-one. So those two agreements are the last two that we have left at the moment. Now, we have two new ones starting, the one from Nidek, Brooklyn Heights. We talked about that one. And then you can see right under that two hundred and eighty-one thousand line, there's a new Charter Steel agreement which runs through twenty thirty-four, which will be starting when the previous one ends. But a quick glance at the payroll differential will give you an indication of what that number is going to be. And in fact, Angel Maryweather said it's probably, her calculations show it's going to be about thirty-six, thirty-seven thousand dollars a year. So we're going from three hundred and eighty thousand to thirty-six thousand. Now, part of that is made up because they start paying property tax on the stuff that was evaded in the first place, right? But whether, how much that property tax is going to be, it's pretty difficult to figure out. So we may or may not come out ahead. Most likely, we'll lose money. This has happened over the last several, you know, many times over the last few years because, like when I was on council in Brooklyn Heights, we always said, give the school half the payroll. It doesn't matter, right? Well, they didn't do that with Nidek. They aren't doing that sort of thing anymore. And, you know, we always lost a little bit when the agreement ended and the property tax revenue kicked in because it was always less than the revenue sharing. So unfortunately, not good news on the income side. So it is what it is, right? So I thought I'd point that out to you. The other thing I wanted to talk about is I went to the seat, whoops, what did I do there? Let me do that again. I went to the opening day at the Career Center this morning. And it, it's an inter, and I was also at the open house yesterday, the elementary school. And it's an interesting contrast to watch how the teachers are dealing with the two different sets of students, right? Because I was standing in, I think it was a fifth grade classroom with one of those teachers, and he's, he's talking to the student and a parent, and he's addressing the student by, this is a new student coming in his class. Oh, I, yeah, I already know you. And I know your mom. And, and here's what you're going to be doing this year. And, and here's what the other teacher's going to be doing with you. And having those kinds of conversations. And everywhere I went, those conversations were very similar, right? Everybody knew everybody. And they were talking about, here's what's coming up. Here are the things that we're looking forward to. Then I went to the Career Center this morning, absolutely, totally different. Everybody's being introduced to everybody. No one knows anyone. The teachers don't know any of the students. The students don't know each other. And it's such an interesting contrast. It was interesting to watch how the teachers handled that. Because they're going around the room, what's your favorite food? Do you work out, you know, do you have a job? What is it, right? They're going around the room and trying to learn who their students are. So that, and have the students learn each other because, you know, you got eight, potentially eight different districts. You have six or eight people in the room. They may never, none of them have ever met any of each other, right? They're all new. So it was very interesting to see that contrast. But they were doing a very nice job, by the way, I thought. The teachers were doing an excellent job of learning something about their students and giving them the introduction. You know, here are the rules, here's the attendance rules, here are the incentives you can earn. They're doing a nice job of doing that. So I really, I think I learned a lot from that. I spent some time with Dino, who used to be here, of course.
Who did you say?
Dino. De, what?
DeGronimo.
DeGronimo. I was going to call him DeGrelle, whoa, and I drew that with a wrong. So we spent some time together too. And I learned something about their academic classes. I always thought that their academic classes were for students who were having difficulty in their districts. But it's, it's to fill in. The people who are in the technical studies, like those who are in the machine shops, they have to be excellent at math. So they're getting Algebra II, they're getting pre-calc at the Career Center. I didn't realize that. And the classes are tiny. There were three people in pre-calc.
Yeah. One of our parents is a teacher over there, right? Julie Jacobs?
Julie.
And Matt Chefler.
And Matt Chefler, right. And Kim is there too. And Lea Bob.
And Kim's daughter are, man's stepdaughters there. And Dino, who taught here, and Kristen Walco, who was taught here, is out there. It's Cog Heights South is what.
Yeah, it really is. We probably have, especially based on our size, I think we may have a much higher percentage of staff. And I'm not, I don't remember her name right now, but one of the administrative assistants or clericals in the, in the front office, I think, in the treasures.
Brad Berth's granddaughter.
Yeah, another one of our graduates. So it is, it is interesting to spend some time in that building and see who's there and what they're working on. But, so anyhow, I thought, I thought you might enjoy hearing a little bit about what, what I learned at the Career Center today. And of course, I also spent some time in some of the more technical areas too. And like, you know, I just chipped right in. And when the teacher was talking about something, they'd turn to me and say, so, Mr. Suchacki, do you have anything to add to what I just said? It was kind of fun. So anyhow, I think that's all I have on my list, so.
Thank you. Mr. Evans.
Yeah, so I've got a little bit of a different item. This would be a possible discussion item for the board, for a future board meeting. And I'm not sure how soon. But I wanted to give a little background. You know, over the last eighteen months, as a board member, I've received communications from a district resident, as well as I've received communications from external parties outside of the district. And in each case, the people are concerned about our continuing use of a mascot that people deemed to be offensive. So what I wanted to do was ask my fellow board members if they'd like to have the information that I've received. I think they may have some or all of it. I'd be happy to share it with them. But I also wanted to, to engage the board and the community and, and others in a conversation about whether this is a subject that the, that is ripe for change or may be ripe for change. I don't particularly have a, a conclusion in mind, but I do think that it's my job to tell you and the others what I'm reading, and if it pertains to our district, to communicate it so that everybody has a chance to, to weigh in and express their, their views on the matter. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to add, thank you so much for allowing to me, allowing me to invite myself to convocation. It was the first year I could go just because my schedule worked out. But it was wonderful. I mean, I do that as an educator every year for the last twenty-one years I've done it. And to be able to be on the other end of it and to welcome, you know, teachers being in their shoes and knowing like, oh gosh, it's the first day back after like a long break. So it was, it was really like, I, I think one of the, the highlights for me, just as a school board member, it was really neat. So thank you, Mr. Evans, for allowing me to invite myself.
Mr. Harris told me, this I'll take it. So he said, I interject enough humor there that I should be able to plug the mission in that. So I didn't realize that I was bringing the house down.
I'm really sorry I missed it.
That was good. And then I just want to say, the, the high school open house, I'm so bummed out. We had a soccer, was it a scrimmage show? I don't even know.
Yes, scrimmage.
Scrimmage out in Berkshire or Berkshire. So we, we literally missed the entire timeframe. So hope it went well. Sorry. You know, my only recommendation is pick a day that there's nothing going on, which will never happen because there's stuff going on here all the time and our kids are so busy and active. And it was an enjoyable summer. I want to say, again, I, I think I said in the last board meeting, driving up here multiple times each day from August one on, you know, for practices here and there, it, it was not summer break for our kids that month. They are here, they are excited, there are smiles on their face, they're chatting, they're energetic, they're, you know, sweating, they're, it just, it's so cool to see that. I mean, and, and if you really, if we really counted numbers, it's probably a good percentage of our kids that are here, you know, dedicating that time. So good stuff. That's all I've got for my little report. Oh, and we need to get a finance committee. I was supposed to tell you that after the last meeting. We need to get that scheduled.
I forgot one more. Mayor Boxton told me that the, so Chicago Heights has approved a sign. They didn't get the grant that they wanted, but they went ahead and put in their budget. So we're going to, we're going to put a sign up on our property out here and collaborate with the village. It'll be dual purpose for the village and for our district. It'll be an electronic sign. So because Leanne's here around over there, we can just email messages that we went on the sign and they'll put it up. So then we'll take down the old sign here and they're going to take down their old sign. But they've both had in their budget, thankful to the village for working so closely with us. And that'll be, that'll be a big add-on for us too.
It'll be so modern.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Updated. It'll be sharp.
I'll do, I'm going to hold on to that picture, me and the notebook changing the sign out front in, in December with Mr. Ramakon on one side, me on the other side. And it'd be January or February because I just, I look cold in the picture. That's all I know. I think the sign was a year or two old at the time.
I was going to say, the sign is that old.
Yeah, it's that old. It's that old.
Couldn't resist, sorry.
Board committee reports and comments. We just did the ad. It should be noted that the Board of Education members received their agendas several days prior to the actual meeting. Thus, they have had considerable opportunity to study it and ask questions. Upcoming meetings that will all be here. Wednesdays at seven PM, September fourth, September eighteenth, October ninth, October twenty-third, November sixth, November twentieth, and December eleventh. And we seriously just got like to the middle of the school year with that. That's crazy. Okay. Any possible agenda items? I, I am adding Mr. Dobbins. We want to say mascot discussion under board discussion.
Yeah, I think it'd be a discussion. I'm not aware that the board would need to take any explicit action, but that's probably something that we should talk about.
Okay, and I need to add one.
Okay.
Because the Career Center appointment is a three-year appointment in my, this is the end of my term there. So we either, we need to appoint someone, whether, you know, it would be me to continue, or if you appoint another board member, or a community member, which has happened once before. So we need to have that discussion about the, the options that we have.
Okay. And so maybe Mr. Suchacki, you could bring just more of a description of what it entails, the role and stuff like that, so people could hear more about it.
Okay. And we, we have plenty of time. We don't have to actually make the appointment until December.
Any OSBA delegate?
Oh, yes. I did have that in my.
OSBA delegate, yeah.
Okay. I think Mark really wanted to do that. Well, Mark expressed interest, but Joe, you weren't here. So then they were going to like maybe throw you under the bus because you were here. Joe's got it? So consider if you would want to do it, Mark has expressed interest. So you could always be like the backup.
You do have, yeah, you're supposed to have a backup.
One of the negative parts of it is, we talked about last time, is that it, it causes you to miss, I think, like two sessions because the way that it's, the timeframe is.
Right.
But doing it last year, it was kind of a neat experience to see that.
It is a good experience to have. I will say though, that if, you gentlemen, you, I mean, this is only your second time. If you don't want to give up that many sessions.
Yeah.
I obviously have been a number of times now.
Okay.
And if you prefer not to give up the sessions, I, I would also volunteer to do it. But I don't want to deprive you of the opportunity, if you want, because it is interesting to sit through it at least once, so.
Yeah.
So think about it and we'll put it on, we'll put it to a vote.
Sounds really good.
All right. Anything else? Okay. At this time, I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting. Can I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Etter. Roll call.
Mrs. Schukert.
Aye.
Mrs. Etter.
Aye.
Mr. Naaman.
Hi.
Mr. Suchacki.
Hi.
Mr. Dobbins.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. We are now adjourned and it is, oh gosh, nine oh four.